Okay. So let's bring to order the June 3, 2020 workshop meeting of the Narberth Borough Council.
Bob, I think you have to record it. I need permission from the host to.
Let me just send this, I'm just gonna send this back to you, Sean.
Okay.
I'm just gonna record it. Okay, we're rolling.
Thank you.
Welcome. We're bringing to order the June 3, 2020 workshop meeting of the Narberth Borough Council. Mr. Metrick, will you please call the roll?
Sure, thank you. Ms. Rickards?
Here.
Ms. Pananopoulos?
Here.
Mr. McGreevy?
Here.
Ms. Elshocks?
Here.
Mr. Bush?
Here.
Vice President Weissboard?
President.
President Aaron Muterik is absent tonight. Mayor Andrea Deutsch?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Metrick. Good evening, everyone. As Sean just mentioned, Aaron Muterik, our council president, is not here with us this evening. On Sunday, his father passed away. And he's taken some time to be with his family. And I know we all extend our deepest condolences and prayers to Aaron and the Muterik family and their friends. His father was well-loved by many in the community. I'm also aware that our hearts are very heavy for the condition of our country and that we're faced with challenges in the nation that touch us deeply here in Narberth. And we're grieving the COVID-19 pandemic. And for some of us, that means the loss of people from our lives and economic instability and health security that we used to take for granted. And to add to that, this week, we all witnessed the open murder by a group of law enforcement officers of a person in Minneapolis, a human being. And that surfaced some fresh awareness that we must do more to care for each other and prepare our world. Later during the meeting, I hope we'll hear from the Human Relations Commission there on the phone, as well as members of the council here on these topics, and hopefully as well from the public. It's times like this that it helps me to remember how grateful we are to have each other. For Mayor Deutsch, she loses a lot of sleep thinking about us and how to keep us all safe. And I'm thankful for this to be serving with this current group of council members, all of you. And our skillful professional manager, Mr. Metrick, his team, Mr. West, Mr. Hartman, they worked tirelessly through the pandemic, keeping us functioning. And also grateful to our experienced police chief, John Gallagher, our police department, our volunteer fire corps, and we owe a debt of gratitude for their dedication and the discipline and commitment. They were out in the storm just a few minutes ago. They're probably out there now. And most importantly, our neighbors and business community members who are doing their best at this time for Narberth. They trust us to do our best for Narberth. And certainly at this moment, we miss Aaron's leadership. But we'll keep moving forward and hopefully I'll remember to emulate his kindness and ability to listen to each other with respect. Mayor Deutsch, do you have any comments to make this evening?
I do. Tonight, I actually have a pretty full report. I'd like to start off again with condolences to President Muterik from the loss of his father and send the borough's love to his family and know that we are all holding him in our heart. This week, as was mentioned, we are not only dealing with the pandemic, we're dealing with, you know, the repercussions of the murder of yet another African-American man at the hands of police. At this time, I want to thank our Chief Gallagher and our police for working so hard and tirelessly on behalf of the community and endeavoring and continuing to endeavor to work to make sure everyone is treated fairly and even-handedly and with the utmost professionalism. And I'd like to give a thanks to our police force for their hard efforts. And we will continue to train and work to make sure that that continues to be the case. Another major issue that we're going through, and I gave a full, full report in the Public Safety Committee that we just had, I'll give a brief version now. As of Friday, June 5, the governor is going to take us from the red phase of pandemic preparation to the yellow phase, which is a step-down phase. And there's going to be some changes in the borough, although we are not, this is not the green phase. So we are not letting, you know, taking the Band-Aid off and everything goes back to normal. I want to give people the notice of some of the changes that are happening as of Friday. Let's start with our Narberth Public Spaces, our parks and playgrounds. As of Friday, the Narberth Park Fields will be open for limited use. We'll be following the CDC guidelines for these parks. That means stay at home if you're feeling sick or unwell. Use social distancing when in the parks, at least six feet between individuals at all times. And we are not going to allow organized sports or activities in the fields during this time. That's not recommended by the CDC. The tennis courts will be opened. We ask that people play only singles and not doubles and still maintain your distancing. If you're waiting for a court, please give the required six feet of space. Our basketball courts will remain closed, as basketball is a sport that has close contact and physical, close physical contact and is not conducive to six feet social distancing. Our playground, Candy Cane City, will remain closed, as we currently do not have the ability to sanitize it on a regular basis and keep the surfaces, all the surfaces in there, to the clean point that they need to be to avoid exposure. So currently, the Narberth Park Restrooms will remain closed. This is just a temporary situation until we go into next week and can determine how we can try to meet the CDC guidelines and maintain safety for everyone. So the closure is just going to be over the weekend until we can figure out exactly how we can work this. Talking about 80 Windsor Avenue, which is the library, the library will be open with limited services. They've given a description of the services they will allow. They're asking you to return your books that have been out all this time. You'll be able to take things out for pickup service. Refer to their website for additional information. It will be open on a limited takeout kind of situation. Talking about 100 Conway, the Borough Building. Borough operations will remain open. All businesses will be continued to be handled remotely that have permits and tax payments and service-related issues. If you do require a face-to-face meeting, make an appointment with the office and follow the guidelines that they have installed to make sure everybody stays safe, including wearing a mask, and follow whatever guidelines they have in there to maintain safety for everybody. The big thing, we're gonna have some openings in our downtown with the yellow phase. So some of our non-essential retail stores will be opening. And I went over a whole list of requirements at the Public Safety Meeting. Those requirements are also posted on Governor Wolf's website and go into great detail. Some of the highlights, you're gonna have to wear a mask if you go in a business. And the businesses, the non-essential retail, we're talking stores, not restaurants. They'll be allowed to have 50% capacity. But you'll have to wear a mask unless there's a medical reason that you cannot wear a mask. And they have the right to deny you entry if you do not have that mask. And they're gonna be cleaning the high-touch areas and disinfecting as per CDC guidelines. If anybody has questions, they can contact me. I can give you details on specific points. For me to go over all the points now would take hours. But if you have questions, please contact me. If you can't find them on the website, contact me. I'll get you to where the information is found. So lastly, as of Friday, you're gonna see some of our restaurants are not, they're not allowed to have dine-in service. So you're not allowed to go in the restaurant to eat. Will be tables set up outside the premises for people to be able to enjoy their meals outside. Again, there's gonna be a lot of guidance from the governor's office in terms of how to do this. They have to maintain six feet apart. And there's gonna have to be social distancing and cleaning. And there'll be, your dinners, if they're served, will be served on disposable dish, plates. And there are other changes the restaurants have been made aware of. If you have any questions, please let us know. You can also still take out from our restaurants and support them by taking out and ordering your favorite meals to eat in the privacy of your own home. Or frankly, outside at this point. You can sit on the bench and eat as long as you're maintained, because we're no longer under stay-at-home orders. So take out if that works for you and support our local businesses, and that would be terrific. As far as groups go, we're allowed to meet in groups of up to 25 people, no more than 25 people. It's not allowed. And even if you do meet, again, you're required to do social distancing. The virus is still out there. We're still dealing with it. And if we get real close together and start getting in a party-like atmosphere, we are going to wind up with a problem that we don't want. So relax a little bit and stay safe, wash your hands, and if you don't feel well, stay home, and that would be it.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And before moving on to our discussion items, I'd like to ask for a motion to revise the agenda of the discussion items in the following way. I'd like to ask that we add a short presentation from the Narberth Human Relations Commission. And I'd also like us to add a discussion with Mr. Bressi of the Narberth Planning Commission to discuss the revised 5A amendments, zoning amendments.
Bob, before we make that motion, could I ask one question of Mayor Deutsch? Or is this not the correct time to do that? About the yellow phase?
Why don't you ask now?
Okay, I'm sorry. I just was wondering, Mayor Deutsch, if, say, if the numbers started to go up in Narberth during yellow, the numbers of people getting COVID, yet the numbers, say, Montgomery County-wide, aren't going up enough that the governor would move it to red? What kind of discretion do we have as a borough to limit some things in the yellow phase? Like if just our?
If we started having a problem, our health department and advisories from other experts, we do have some, I have the authority to shut down places if we have to shut them down again to maintain public safety.
Okay.
But ordinarily, we'd like to follow the guidelines set for us, you know, by Montgomery County and by Governor Wolf and the CDC.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
The governor really has pledged to follow the science on this. And I think, I don't, my sense is that Montgomery County won't hesitate to close us down, you know, back to the yellow phase if it's needed.
Bob, if I can ask a question too of Andrea. Andrea, how are we advising citizens that see other neighbors breaking those rules? Whether it's people congregating at restaurants, are we advising folks to have citizen-to-citizen conversations? Are we calling the police to give gentle warnings? How do we recommend we handle this?
So if you see a problem, contact our police. If you, I don't want to create any confrontation between friends and neighbors. And if you think it can't be done without being awkward or confrontational, please contact our police, and our police will take care of it.
Thank you, Mayor. So, any other questions for the mayor? Okay, so let's, could I have a motion to add the Human Relations Commission? We have Carolyn is here, and later when it's her turn to speak, she can tell me how to say her last name.
I would move to amend the agenda to include the Human Relations Commission.
A second?
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so we will make Human Relations Commission item E on the agenda. May I have a motion to add Narberth Planning Commission revised 5A zoning amendment discussion with Mr. Bressi?
Bob, it is on our agenda as 5D zoning amendment, 5A district.
Okay, I'm looking at an agenda that says council rules and procedures, which I was gonna ask to remove for table this week. So you've already done that and published that agenda?
Yeah, I was following your email from earlier.
Oh, you did it from my email. Super. So we've already eliminated, we don't need a motion for that part. So terrific, we're ready. 5D will be Narberth Planning Commission revised 5A zoning amendment. Great, thank you. Alrighty, paving, discussion item A, paving assessment and restoration planning, Mr. Metrick.
Thank you. This has been a project we've been really excited about. We have found a low-cost solution to create an objective metric of the roadway conditions in the borough. And it's from that that we will present council to make decisions about how to plan for paving both in the short term, meaning this year, and the short horizon over the next three years, but also plan things out and give you points of contact with the plan and intersections where you can, council can make decisions about what investments it wants to make in the borough streets. And this is a core municipal service. We're very excited about leading this effort. And it fits into our goal from a management perspective to make good data-driven decisions and put elected officials in the driver's seat of making good decisions. And Matt West has been very integral in this process. He's worked closely with the Borough Engineer, Eric Johnson. And Matt has compiled some of that information and would like to take a few minutes tonight to present it to you all and sort of set the table for council.
Do you need me to unmute you, Matt? Can you do?
Good, thank you. So I was lamenting before the meeting started that I think my computer is zoomed out. And about late last week, my camera stopped working for some unknown reason, some mysterious reason that I can't figure out quite yet. So I apologize that my ugly mug is not available to everyone to stare at. If I can, I'd like to share my screen here. If the host would enable that, I would be grateful. And I don't know, something about trees falling down with the borough administration, it's just.
Yeah, we're two for three today, right?
50% of borough administration have trees down on their property. I'm not complaining because I don't have it as bad as Sean, but it's still a messy and bad situation here, too.
I may need you just to talk me through how to give you that.
Bob, I think if you make Matt the host temporarily, then he can share a screen.
Now that is an act of trust.
So talk me through that, Rob.
So if you go over to the right, you hover over Matt's name, and then there's a drop-down menu under more. And it should say make host or make co-host.
Terrific. There you go, Matt.
All right.
Thank you, Rob.
Working on it. All right, everybody see that? Okay? Very good. So I'm gonna throw a lot of data and information at you this evening. I do not expect everyone to absorb all of it 100%. I really designed this presentation as a starting point for everyone to start thinking about how Borough Council can be involved in taking a leadership role in defining a reinvestment in our critical infrastructure. One of the first things that, you know, Borough Administration believes is critical infrastructure is our roads. So roads, stormwater, and sewer are the three core infrastructure things that the borough is in charge of maintaining over time. And so we've had a lot of utility work in the borough this past several years. It seems like a lifetime now. I think this is the first year since my tenure in Narberth that there hasn't been some sort of disruptive utility work in the streets going on. That's been a refreshing thing, but you've also seen a bunch of, you know, cut-up roadway. But what we did was that instead of, you know, using that the reaping money that PICO or Aqua would use to dedicate to repave the area that they disrupted, we chose instead to take a cash reimbursement from PICO and Aqua to build our capital fund. If you remember that conversation from several years ago with Sean leading the budget and capital plan discussions, that was the integral role, or the integral step in helping us build our capital plan or even our capital fund, which didn't exist prior to our tenure. So it's an important aspect of the money building our future that I'd really like to highlight. And one of the key takeaways, and that, you know, that council has supported the Borough Administration's vision in building our capital fund, so we can start reinvesting in this critical infrastructure. Let's see here, what are we doing? All right, Narberth Borough Study Area, we all know that quite well. Here are the roads. We have a total of just under 14 miles of roads in the borough, and it's divided up into three types: state, local, and private. But for this project, we removed the state roads, since the state is in charge of paving those roads, and the private roads, Narbrook Park, Lanthorn Lane, Berry Road, Shady Lane, Brynwood Manor, municipal lot driveways and so forth. So that brings us down to just over 11 miles, and it reduced it about 19%. So that's the universe of roads that we're looking for for this pavement scan. So if you remember, a part of the capital plan, we invested in a pavement scan that was completed by the borough's engineers, Panoni, and that was completed in right around the time that COVID hit. So, which is why we're talking about this in June instead of April. It took us a while for me to get this data to a presentation standpoint. But here we are. The data that they collected resulted in over 6,000 data points. And I'm gonna show you a little bit what that looks like, because at the borough level, that's what we see right now. It just looks like straight lines, but if we zoom in, it'd be a whole bunch of series of dots. And each one of those dots equals a different rating, and we'll get into those ratings in a minute. And so if we zoom in to look at a couple of roads intersection, this is looking at our road center line and where those dots, the pavement scan, intersect. So you can see that the dots don't necessarily line up with our roads, even though a dot is associated with a road. And notice the multicolored dots. Each one of those dots represents a different level. Level meaning, what is the condition of that pavement? Level one, let's call those the Cadillac roads. Those are the ones that are the most pristine roads in the borough. Level two, all the way up to level five, five being the worst. Good news, the borough does not have any level-five roads in the borough. So something to cheer about, right? So if we look then, how do we make that point data more applicable to our needs? If we would then take that point data and then conflate it, which is taking that point data and assigning it then to that linear feature, that road segment, and taking the average of all of those points and assign it to that line, we then know what that intersection, that road, intersection-to-intersection, what that pavement rating is. If we have that pavement rating then, we can calculate road surface area and do a pretty simple multiplication to determine how much it would cost to repave intersection-to-intersection and look at then what that pavement rating is. So let's look at the meat and potatoes of this. The average rating of all roads in the borough is 2.4, which is pretty good. It's above average. So we have roads below average, five miles, it's almost, you know, just less than 50%. Roads that are above average, 6.25 miles. It didn't really show us much. You know, I need more data to make better decisions. So what I decided to do was take those ratings and then create new ranges. And what I'm calling these the borough's ratings. Instead of having a rating based on the points, that takes these points, and now we're looking at line segments. And then I divide it up into five ratings that then links up with what the borough engineer defined. So what I'm calling rating one are those line segments that have a rating of one to one and a half. Rating two, as you can see, is 1.51 to 2.5, and so on and so forth. And so what this map is showing us, and I didn't symbolize it because it was just too much data, we have no rating fives, but that big red line, that's our only rating four line segment in the borough. So what I want to do next is just flip through each rating, just to highlight each of the roads. So rating one, these are the best roads in the borough. Those roads that are highlighted, the unit block of Sabine, 200 and 300 blocks of Elmwood, South Narberth, and Rockland Avenue. Now we're getting into rating two. These are the average roads. Now let's start talking about rating three and four. These are the roads that I am going to suggest the borough think long and hard about starting to reinvest in. These are the roads that have the most significant damage, and these are the ones that are going to need the most immediate attention. So our recommendation is to combine rating three and rating four. And the total estimated cost to repave both the rating three and four roads would be just under $800,000. That's your total square yards times $10. That's a good estimate as of right now. The investment schedule we're gonna talk about in a minute, it needs to be determined by council. And we also recommend that the rescan of each pavement, meaning all of those dots generated, council really should invest in a three-year rescan of pavement. And through talking to our borough engineer, it's recommended that really the sweet spot for annual construction contracts really needs to be no less than $100,000. Any contract that would be less than that, it would become cost prohibitive for the borough engineer's time, staff time, the permitting process, and you also have the fear of not getting a quality paving contractor for smaller projects. So I wanted to zip through all of that data. And again, you know, if you're interested in seeing the meat and potatoes, all of the GIS data, send me an email. I'd be happy to set up an in-person, after Friday, of course, an in-person meeting at council. I could put it up on the screen, and we could social distance, and I can show you all of the nuts and bolts behind it if you're really into it. Long story short, we have the ability to then query not only just the rating of each of those line segments, but we could query within those ranges, like what are the worst rating-three roads, right? Because each line segment has its own rating. And then we could also query it by road type. Say council wanted to repave all of Conway Avenue. So we could query that out. We could estimate how much that repave would cost, so on and so forth. There is a time, so the first fact is that the borough is fiscally constrained. We don't have all the money in the world. We are not going to be able to reinvest in repaving all of the three and four roads, investing $800,000 off the bat. So we're gonna have to think about this long-term. And what is a good repayment plan reinvestment schedule? The predominant funding mechanism that we are suggesting to use is highway aid funds. And we are recommending a $65,000 annual investment. Council, of course, has the ability to consider using additional funds through other capital F funds, such as the capital fund or even the general fund. And that's up for discussion. If council wants to reinvest more than that $65,000, they certainly can do that. The time sensitivity is another thing that we need to think about, is that we are already well into paving season. And it's gonna be difficult for us to get into a pavement contract this season. First of all, we don't have, you know, $65,000 is below that $100,000 threshold again. And it's late in the season. It's gonna be difficult for us to get that approval and get a quality contractor this year. It's not out of the realm of possibility as of yet, but each month that goes by, it's going to become more difficult and more difficult. The other thing I'd like council to think about while considering a reinvestment plan for repaving is that repaving is just one element of the broader infrastructure that's also included in sewer and stormwater and curbs and sidewalks. It would be a shame if council decided to invest in a segment of road to repave and then a year later, the sewer and stormwater fails and it needs to be reinstalled, thus eliminating the benefit of repaving a road. So these, there are these other factors that need to be considered when determining which roads really should be at the highest level of reinvestment. And as of right now, the roads are the only good qualitative data that we have for assessment. We're in conversations and discussions with the Borough Engineer regarding a similar application to determine the status of our sewer and stormwater sewer system and curbs and sidewalks. So here we are, last slide, and I'm flying through, I understand. If you, if you want, I'll, I'll send this presentation out to everybody also. And please feel free to contact me directly if you want further clarification at any time. So here's the decision point, and this is where I am bringing it to council. The first thing we need to talk about is funding. Does council support an annual dedicated highway aid fund investment of $65,000 a year? Or would council support that and additional dedicated funding amount to be determined by council? And what fund, capital F, those funds would come from? The next thing we need to consider is timing. You know, option one, do we want to begin a bi-annual repaving plan to begin in spring 2021? That's next year. That would be the most ideal in, in talking with our Borough Engineer. That would give us enough time to put a quality contract together. And we say bi-annual because that means we can combine the $65,000 a year into a $130 contract, $130,000 contract every two years. And so it's above that $100,000 threshold. It would, it would be cost-effective for that to happen. It would be, we would be able to, you know, attract a quality repaving contractor as well. Option two, we can fund the repaving, repaving a rating four road segment, which is that, the 100 block of Dudley Avenue. In 2020, we could do it this year, would cost about $23,000 and then begin a bi-annual repaving plan next year. And that would be that $130,000 every two years. Option three would begin annual repaving plan in 2020, just using that $65,000 a year. Or the option four, begin that annual repaving plan plus additional funding. So here's the menu, here's the idea, and here's the discussion that I would really like council's insight on to take their temperature to see what levels of reinvestment in the critical infrastructure you're really willing to make. And that's everything. Any questions?
Any questions?
Sorry, go ahead, Bob.
Go ahead, Mona.
So again, I mean, I, I was, I'm glad you mentioned it because this is what I was wondering when you were talking is what about stormwater and sewer? And it would be a shame to spend money on roads that we'd then have to tear back up to fix stormwater drains and sewer. So I'm wondering, do you have any idea how soon we might be able to get a similar map or estimate for stormwater and sewer needs? And how much that might cost to get that similar estimate? So we could lay a map over the whole town with all of those needs together?
Yeah, good question. And we actually had a meeting with Eric Johnson, the Borough's Engineer, last week. And we've asked him to forward us a proposal about, and get it, get us in contact with what, what systems they have to gather that data and what it looks like and if it would plug into our GIS. And if so, how it would, as well as cost. So I'm expecting, you know, hopefully this week or next week, we can get something from Eric. Turnaround time, you know, it all depends on the system. I just don't have enough to, you know, recommend how long that would take. But by using that, you know, giving us a little more time, option one, starting the beginning repavement plan next year would give us that time to build that data. And so in talking about this issue, if we decide to go and repave one of the rating three and four, and we know just institutional-wise, that we know that the stormwater and sewer are in rough shape on one of the high priority three or four, we would make that game day decision and say, you know, we better not repave this right now because we need to reinvest in the sewer and/or stormwater first and foremost. So, you know, stall this work, understanding that both the sewer and stormwater are important and that up until we get that objective data, we have to truly rely on that institutional knowledge in the meantime.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Rob?
Oh, go ahead, Cindy.
No, no, go ahead, Rob.
I just wanted to, to ask, following on Mona. So when we say repaving, we're just talking about the, you know, the McCann, the asphalt, right? And that, does that include the striping is what I'm asking? So in other words, do we have to have our bike plan and our parking plan figured out for those segments as well? Or talk me through that?
Yeah, sure. So that, you know, the bike plan and striping plan are also, are additional, you know, are add-ons. That would be in addition to the sewer and stormwater infrastructure. Striping is a little more easy because you can kind of remove it easier than, you know, digging up a street. So I'm less worried about that in, in the greater sense of things. But this is really talking about, not just really, this is just the milling and overlaying of all of our roads.
Okay. Cindy?
So Matt, I don't think there are, there's a better traffic calming tool than some potholes and a bit of a rough ride on a street. Do you anticipate, once we do pave and have nice smooth roads, that we're going to have to invest additional dollars in some traffic calming mitigation?
I always believe that we should be investing in traffic calming measures. I believe even with potholes, watching traffic pick up speed on Haverford Ave next to the municipal building every day, it really has become a raceway. I'm often surprised on how, how fast cars are going. And so, yeah, maybe initially, potholes do work as a deterrent. But I am seeing even on Wynwood Avenue, the cars are just going really, really fast. And so I am personally always at that bicycle and pedestrian standpoint. I'm always looking to slow the speeds down. And I think council really should consider dedicating some funding for continued speed reduction in traffic calming. It's something that's not ever going to go away. This is my former life, being a transportation planner. You know, it's never going to go away. It's, it's a fight that you're always going to be fighting. And so if, if council wants to dedicate annual funds, it doesn't even have to be that much. You can get pretty creative with low-tech solutions, whether they be temporary rumble strips or those sorts of things. I think we should really start thinking of, think about considering those elements.
Oh, Matt, you're talking my language. I mean, this has been a battle I've had since I've been in the borough for 15 years. And it just was, was not identified as a priority.
And I think Cindy, just to tag on to your conversation there, I, I had two questions. My general question really relates to yours, Cindy. When you were talking about core municipal services, Matt, being sewer, stormwater, curbs, sidewalk, it seemed to me that also core municipal services includes the kinds of features that Cindy's referring to, you know, that she, that she actually introduced in the Complete Streets investigation back when she was chairing, I believe, infrastructure several years ago. And so I wonder about, how do you, is it practical in some way to hold the sort of bump outs and tree wells and stormwater features like bioswells? And even some of the special features, say intersection features of a, of a multimodal transportation plan that might be included with the biking, you know, good bike infrastructure? Sort of all together with, with these, sort of in this basket of decision-making? Because if there's a way to triage where the money's spent in relationship to where we intend to make significant infrastructure improvements, it's, I don't know, I guess I'd just sort of like to see it overlaid on the, on the same kind of analysis that you've done for paving. That's a comment, I'd like to hear your comments on it. But, but then more specifically, my second question more specifically, Matt, has to do with the repaving dollars and the, and how you imagine getting to every street in the borough over time. In the olden days, like I think even as, you know, before, in the pre-PICO-Aqua tear up of everything in Narberth, the streets, every street in Narberth was being repaved every 10 years. So basically, the management at the time would take all of the total number of miles, divide by 10, and then do that number about once a year. That's my recollection. How does this plan differ, say, in cost or efficiency or in, in how does it improve on that?
So one of the key, I see Sean chomped at the bit there too, because he and I are of like minds on this and that we, we don't want, you know, the goal of this is that we want the borough to continue to be in health, sound fiscal health. And we don't, are not in the, not in favor of borrowing money to do something, to complete a project that we have enough in our budget if we plan accordingly and do it in a segmented way. And if we look at a 10-year plan, if you divide up all of those roads, and all of those roads don't necessarily need to be repaved every 10 years. And that's the beauty of having this data. Even if we focus on the bad, quote, "bad" roads right now, that's $800,000 over a 10-year period, if you divide that, only those bad roads, that would be an $80,000 a year investment. And we're suggesting $65,000 a year. And, you know, it would really enable us to be fiscally responsible, use objective data and not put the borough in future financial trouble by borrowing for something that we really should be budgeting for. I don't know if Sean, Sean did a lot of the fiscal analysis for this also, if he has anything he'd like to add.
Yeah, and we, and we know that four years ago, 100% of the south side roads were repaved. So it'd be curious to see what the engineer's analysis, I'd like to sort of look again, if you wouldn't mind flipping back at the engineer's analysis of the south side in particular, because that was just 100% repaved four or five years ago.
Yeah, and they're all
And you can see that, and there you can see the variability in wear and tear. So not all the roads are the same, is what you're saying?
Yeah, and they're all coming into the same rating. And that was at a time that, you know, we were continuing past practice of, you know, when a utility was in to borrow money to repave. And in the meantime, our, you know, we've just gotten smarter with data collection and building and our fiscal, we've got our fiscal house in order. And we're really starting to develop these long-term planning tools that'll enable us to make better decisions now and in the future. And to your point about using these other things to add qualitative data to our decision-making, I'm all for it. This is just one element that we use, paving analysis. If we wanted, if we knew that, you know, Windsor Avenue was being considered for complete streets, then maybe we would hold off on that until we had more investment money available to do the entire thing that would include bump outs. Because this is, this plan here is only for mill and overlay. This doesn't take into account any other engineering for redesign, other construction, which, you know, costs are going to start escalating pretty quickly.
Sean or others?
Can I jump in? I, I share your, I share your concern about the, the costs, Bob, and the sort of long-term replacement schedule. It seems like to replace the roads that are low average, that are, that are marked as, you know, current priorities in one way or another, that's 14 years with 65K a year. And by then, I mean, some of the other roads are going to have eroded, right? I mean, that's only half the roads in the borough. I, you know, I don't know for sure, I'm not a highway engineer, but I believe that if we were to do this plan, year after, you know, every time we analyzed it, we would see more and more mileage becoming poorer condition. I mean, this, this would not keep us current on maintenance, I suspect. $65,000 a year does not seem like it would keep us current on, on road maintenance. So I think we're going to have to find another, some more money for this in the budget. I just don't think 65K cuts it annually.
Yeah, Fred, you make a really good point about, you know, not thinking about what the degradation of other roads. And I kind of glossed over here, if you see on this slide, you know, the rescan of the pavement on a three-year cycle to, you know, to see, to catch what segments have been repaved and then to also see what other road segments are trending worse or which ones are continuing to be in the same ratings. Because some, you know, like, you know, those roads that get more traffic are going to wear more quickly than those that don't. And so if you do that, if we do that on a three-year cycle, we'll then start seeing, okay, how are those ratings changing over time? And I, I share your sentiment that $65,000 is not enough, but this is council's discussion and council's decision. And we would certainly welcome more, more dedicated funding.
Yeah, thank you. I always want to follow up on Fred's question, because Fred, that's, that was closely related to what I, what I had a question about was that, this is the $65,000, can we go back to the last slide where you have the budgeting, sort of the decision point? Yeah, thank, right, so that's a, a high, a dedicated highway aid fund investment. So you're recommending, that's the federal highway aid fund, is that, do I, first of all, just, am I correct about that?
No, that's state highway aid.
State highway, sorry. So it might be from, from state highway fund. So we're talking about just taking funds from the, from what we get a grant from the state, right? Basically, it's just, I want to make sure, I want to make sure I understand where the $65,000 a year comes from.
It's liquid fuels, right?
Yes, liquid fuel funds come, they come from gas tax, a percentage of every gallon pumped in the state gets put into a fund and based upon however many lane, lane miles
Miles of, right.
You get X amount per year.
So we're talking about setting aside, dedicating a certain amount of that for this repaving program. And I wanted to know if the $65,000 was a number that was drawn on our expenditures in previous years, if we've sort of, if that's, if that's what it's based on. I'm trying to figure out where the $65,000 comes from. And also was just, I wanted to ask about the, the cash payout from PICO and Aqua and whether, I, I guess it had been my impression that one of the reasons why, why we didn't just repave the roads then was we said, look, it would be smarter to wait until we have a plan and then apply some of these funds to that when we have a, when we have a plan to do this efficiently over time. And so I, I think I had assumed that we would be using some of those funds, distributing them and to, to supplement the highway aid fund investment so that we could have a maintenance schedule that would be more likely to satisfy us as, as be more likely to keep up with road degradation on an ongoing basis. So I'm, I'm just asking where the $65,000 comes from, what are, what are other funding options are? Whether we actually still have some of the cash payout from PICO and Aqua that we can draw on?
So Sean did the financial analysis for the highway aid fund. We get X amount of funds per year. And, you know, repaving is one of the approved state expenditures for a highway aid fund and as are other things. And so we look at all of the other things that are approved highway aid fund expenditures in a given year and then looked at how much money we had left. And Sean's got a really snazzy spreadsheet that you can play with the numbers and it's dynamic to see if you want, we can change that number and what happens to that highway aid fund, capital F. You know, if we choose to spend, invest more in, on an annual basis, then the highway aid fund goes broke sooner, right? And also, we don't want any of these funds to go broke. We would like to keep a cushion in all of these funds as sound fiscal practice. You are correct in that there is money, the money that was, that was taken from the utilities was put into the capital fund, capital F. And so council has that discretion to use that, the dollars that are in the fund to fund repavement.
Okay, folks, it's getting late here, we have a lot to do. I want to just ask at this juncture, unless you were still in the middle of a thought there, Michelle. Wave, if you, if you still talk, if you still have a thought.
No, no.
Okay, so we are, let's just see, if we have agreement, do we support, actually, let's talk about whether we support the base $65,000 a year first, before we talk about dedicating additional funding. Is anybody opposed to that? Okay, I don't, I don't hear anyone, I'll give a minute, moment to unmute yourself or, okay. So then let's talk about, we want to, do we want to, as Fred suggests, allocate additional funding so that we get a higher level of re-maintenance? And also, that would then bring us closer to the possibility And also, that would then bring us closer to the possibility of doing an annual $100,000 contract. Fred, please. Fred?
I want to suggest that I think that, given the, uh, the other things that we have going on, the PRP, you know, the bike lane stuff, that we go with the plan to do this next year. And so, you know, we have time to figure out an appropriate amount of funding. But, you know, if we were, if we were to try to rush this this year, you know, we might collide with some of our other projects. So until we have a better sense, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that if we go with, you know, option two on the screen, uh, where are we? More like option one on the screen. Begin the biannual repaving plan, begin spring 2021. You know, can, you know, is it reasonable for us to, to do the repaving next spring, rather than trying to do it now?
I understand the logic. So are there any council members opposed to that, given the fact that we don't have terrible, terrible streets? We have streets that certainly need maintenance and attention, but they're not terrible, terrible. Is anybody opposed to that proposal, waiting till spring 2021? That would allow us to let some, so Fred, along with that, would, would we be then letting the cash build up? We're saving $65,000 from this year's budget, and then combining that with next year's budget, so we have 130 at that point?
I mean, the highway aid fund is really constrained in what we can spend it on. So I think that, yes, that money, that money's naturally going to be occurring. Repaving is a natural, yes, so yes, that's the answer.
But to your point, Fred, I also think that we need to take the time to 2021 to think about how can we then routinely dedicate funds to address issues of, of traffic calming? Along with that, I mean, have that a dedicated, almost budget line to say that, you know, per our comprehensive plan, we're dedicated to a walkable, walkable, bikeable community, and that there's going to be routine maintenance along with the paving that goes along with that.
And, and that's a conversation I'd ask to have go back to the infrastructure committee, because traffic calming can mean a lot of things and can be done in a lot of ways, you know, including street trees, stormwater, you know, bump out, stormwater management, even multi, multimodal infrastructure also can accomplish lots of traffic calming. So it's, it seems like, it, it really is your, uh, it's your, it's all in your concern there, Fred, isn't it, in the infrastructure committee?
So should we let, I mean, Sean also hasn't weighed in on this, I don't know if we need to let him, uh,
Are you being, uh, do you have something, Sean?
The thought I had, that wave passed a little, little ways ago. I just wanted to mention that, um, you know, a 10-year repaving cycle would be really expensive and not really sustainable. And that a well-managed roadway should be lasting you longer than that. And we don't know exactly how long our roads last, because we've never had, never taken this kind of information in and put it in and measured against other information taken at known time intervals, so we can, we can judge the dynamics of paving in the borough. I think what you would find, or what you would find is a pretty consistent overlap between the roads that were used the most and the roads that deteriorated the quickest. But we won't know that until we start, until we start down this road, no, no, uh, pun intended. And to answer Michelle's question, the 65,000 a year is what we can spare, so to speak, out of the highway aid fund without exhausting its resources over a 10, 15-year horizon. And keep in mind that the, what, what enables that dollar value to be 65,000 a year, not something a lot lower, is that council made the, made the investment in LED streetlights, which are going to reduce our electric costs from 78 down to about 42, $43,000 a year, once those are installed. So we'll start realizing those savings as soon as those lights go on, which I suspect will be sometime this year, or at the very latest, early next year. But that's a different topic of conversation. This is a really great conversation, I've taken a lot of notes, and I really appreciate everyone's input on this stuff. Everyone's had really good things to say, and it's helped us figure out, helped me figure out what we need to do to tune the, tune the work that we're going to keep doing on this issue.
Hey, terrific. Is it, does anyone need me to, to summarize what we, what I think I heard us decide? I think we, we, I think we decided that we all support annual dedicated highway fund investment, $65,000 a year in our roads. And that, at this time, we would select option one to begin a biannual paving plan to 21. And I'm assuming that the folks who live on the 200 block of Dudley Avenue would see their road repaved at that time, and could pretty much, since they have the worst road in the borough, they have that fine distinction, they would be one of the first to get, uh, get re, remade, repaved. Does that sound about right, Mr. Manager? Since we called their, their road out, I want to mention that help is on the way.
Uh, yeah, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Sorry, I, my, my mouse went crazy there. Yes, and that's the whole point of this exercise, is to help council make good decisions that can be prioritized in that way.
And then, and then residents can have a reasonable expectation of what will happen.
Yes.
Relief is on the way. Okay, thanks so much, Mr. Bressi, thank you so much for an excellent presentation, and for, for using, you know, for helping us have data-based kind of thinking and decision-making.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address council. And I also just wanted to add that, you know, every year or biannual, the, the roads that are recommended for repaving will certainly be up and be presented to council every time we do it also. It's not like a, a plan that we're, that the administration is going to put together, we're just going to go start paving roads, that, you know, council will see the roads that are going to be up every other year, and will vote to approve that as well. Again, thank you for the time, have a good night.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Okay, folks, it's 8:46, we're going to item five, letter B, COVID-19 yellow phase reopen, uh, response, Mr. Metric. Oh, and Matt, would you please toss the hosting back to me, please?
Sorry about that, I started talking without unmuting. The mayor addressed some of these comments in her, uh, some of the yellow phase reopening decisions that the emergency management team had made with the EMC in her comments earlier this evening. And I think that, um, I won't reiterate those, but we are going going to start communicating those steps and changes out to, uh, the community, and as soon as possible. And, uh, we also are going to continue the dialogue with our downtown businesses to see what, um, support the borough can lend to them for outdoor dining, for outdoor retail, for, for creating more space to facilitate their, their survival, really, in, in our downtown. We had a really robust conversation with them last week, and I thank Ed Ridgeway for organizing that. At this time, though, I don't, uh, I don't know if council wants to get into more of those details at this moment, or if that's something we want to revisit again at the emergency management meeting on Monday.
Why don't, why don't we just move on for now? I would just echo what you said at business meeting, both at the emergency management meeting this week and at the, at the Narbith Business Association meeting. Sean, everybody talked about how, you know, we want to support the borough, wants to support the businesses, in particular the restaurants who've suffered during this closures, by providing some borough accommodation that we could control and give to the restaurants to use. And the details of that, you know, will need to be worked through. The businesses, the restaurants are planning to open for street-side dining on, on Friday. But we don't have to have this, whatever accommodation we're going to create for them implemented by Friday. And so I think council and the public should know that, that that will improve and improve over time. We'll probably be in the yellow phase for a while. And even after we get to the green phase, it doesn't mean life's back to normal. We may still need to observe social distancing in, in the outdoor dining context, so.
If, if I may, I, I just want to head up, I've been receiving a, a ton of letters from constituents who've been requesting that we provide open space, various areas of open space for the restaurants. That was raised, I just want to, that was raised with the restaurants. However, the restaurants didn't find that open space that wasn't right attached to their premises to be very helpful. And so they actually declined, the, the vast majority of the restaurants, uh, in, in the borough declined that offer.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, Andrea. Let's move on, item C, pollution reduction plan, Mr. Metric.
You're still muted, Sean.
He's smiling and shaking his head, there he is.
Yeah, it's probably not going to be the last time I do that. Members of the infrastructure committee and the borough engineer have been working together on the new draft of the pollution reduction plan. We were ironing out some details that made, made a, made a shift between what our plan was going to be, what we thought our plan was going to be, and, uh, what our plan is now, which is, which I will let Eric speak more to that in a, in a second here. But I, I want to say to you all, as council members, we just talked about paving, and to the community as well, we are also talking about stormwater systems and stormwater management as another core municipal function. And this pollution reduction plan is an incredible commitment on part of the borough to designing streets that not only are safe, calm traffic, move cars, but are safe for people crossing, people walking next to on sidewalks, street trees, people on bikes, and also now treating stormwater. So I'm looking forward to the future where Narbith Roads all, all are designed in ways to treat these multiple goals. And our pollution reduction plan is a commitment to that process that's in line with our comprehensive plan goals. And I'm really proud of, of what we've been able to put together.
Are you, is the borough engineer planning to make a presentation on this, Sean, at this time?
I am here to, to speak to it a little bit, yes. All right, thank you, everyone, for having me tonight. So, um, I'll keep this relatively brief, you know, the plan speaks largely for itself. I'll just bring out a few of the points. And then I'll open up for questions. But just to summarize where we are, uh, you know, the original, there was an original PRP plan that was developed in or around 2017. And that was originally, that was submitted DEP, and there was feedback that was gained from that. And, you know, how we got from seven, 2017 to now, uh, there was a long review process by DEP. There was a long process of going back and forth with them, and we ironed out a lot of their comments at that point. We had circulated a revised version back in the fall of the PRP. And since that time, we've been working with the infrastructure committee and with the environmental advisory committee to really iron out and develop a, a plan of how and what systems we're going to implement to meet the sediment reduction goal. And the first item that I want to point out is there, then upside to all this, the new land development that is going to be coming into the borough is you're able to leverage the stormwater management they are funding and installing as part of their development for sediment reduction. So we're able to meet a, a chunk of the sediment reduction at no cost to the borough. So that is kind of an important piece to remember. And then beyond that, you know, where we started looking at, where else can we install projects that will get that reduction? And as you are well aware, Narbith is a very dense, you know, inner suburb of, and a very urbanized area, and you have limited open space. So, uh, you know, in the case where you have a more open municipality, you're able to leverage your open space and, and redevelop stormwater basins and that kind of stuff to meet sediment reduction. But in this case, you know, the places that the borough owns, you have your municipal complex, when the sports fields, and you have your public right-of-way. So focusing in on that, uh, you know, and also, as Sean was mentioning, kind of integrating in the other goals and objectives of the borough with regard to wanting to see more green infrastructure, wanting to, uh, you know, provide traffic calming, and really reevaluate how you use your streets. We've developed, uh, a series of plans that will really connect with that. So the first one is installing various stormwater bump outs. Essentially, they would be at the locations of existing inlets, built along the side of the road, and they would allow us to filter water before it gets to the stormwater system. So forget our sediment reduction, provide a narrowing at certain points of the road, which calms traffic. And we can, they can be installed really anywhere in the borough where water is flowing. So we can really integrate that directly into, you know, our other plans for the streets. And then the other system that we're really looking at is your municipal complex. And that would be a combination of taking water from the library, taking water from the municipal building, also off of your basketball courts and tennis courts. And that could be integrated with any kind of improvements that would be completed there. And then also taking water off of the parking lot. The park, the parking lot would be a little less glamorous, it's more of just an inlet filter system that collects the water. But the rest really is kind of a green-type system that would be proposed. And really, where we are at this point in the process is you have the revised plan, and we're headed towards resubmitting it to DEP at this point to get the sign off on that the plan is adequately, is sound feasible to DEP, and allow us to go forth to the next stage. But before we can submit it, we need to have a 30-day public advertising period. So council would have to authorize that period, and then we accept comments, and we will be able to submit at that point. So if anybody has any questions, either now, or I can also be available afterwards. I'm available.
Questions? Thank you so much, Eric. Fred has a question.
Well, it's not a question, I'll just, uh, point out that since so many of these improvements, so these improvements would need to be made on a five-year basis after we approve it, and a lot of them are on the streets, right? They're going to be, there's a couple buffers on, on some, green buffers on some streets, and there's bump outs. That's why I strongly suggested that we wait on the repaving to figure out, you know, where we're going to do these improvements, among other things, anyway.
Thanks, Fred. Thank you very much, Eric.
No problem, thank you.
We are at item D, Narbith Planning Commission revised 5A amendment. Mr. Bressi, I'm going to unmute you, I think. Unless you can unmute yourself.
I think I'm unmuted.
Oh, great, super, hi, 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 Todd, welcome.
Thank you for making time for me to speak this evening. I'm, I'm reporting to you from Fox, Fox Hall Lane, which is out of power right now. If you guys can take care of that, we'd appreciate it.
Thought it was Halloween.
I don't know how Fred's got it, it's all myself, so. Uh, what, how would you like to proceed?
Like, why don't you, if you would, please, we, we have your text, we have the, the copies you sent us. Could you please just summarize in perhaps a bullet form, and as plain, in plain English, if you're able, well, you do speak plain English, where we are with the 5A amendments that, that the planning commission has been working very diligently on, actually for many months. And so, you know, I think, I think actually starting with kind of an overview, where you started, where you've come to, and then, and then the particular details that are new for us tonight in preparation for the introduction at the business meeting in two weeks.
Okay, thank you. In, in January, we submitted to Borough Council some proposed zoning changes for the 5A zone that were intended to address some immediate issues we had observed based on the development applications we had reviewed over the last year. So, um, during the winter, we became aware of a few other issues about the zoning code that arose through zoning hearing board actions. And so we quickly added in a few additional proposed amendments. Borough Council reviewed those in February, I believe, or March, I guess, and posed some questions to the Planning Commission, which we considered at our April meeting and then reported back to council in a letter on April 28th responding to the questions you had. Based on that, I've been working with the Borough Solicitor on finalizing language that can be provided to you for consideration at your business meeting. So I'm not sure where Mr. Walker stands on those and those at this point, but we spoke as recently as yesterday to kind of make edits and things. Meanwhile, in the win, in the winter and spring, we we embarked on a broader review of the five A zone of downtown. And we looked at a couple of basic issues. We continued to look at building heights. We looked at building scale, frontages. We looked at the question of preserving retail and office viability. Because of resident concerns, we looked more closely at parking. We looked at station circle and at preservation issues and we will be, we we on our meeting this Monday, we completed that work and we'll be submitting a full report to council soon. However, in that work, we also identified a few which which what we consider to be relatively modest additional proposals for changing the zoning code. I quickly wrote them up yesterday after our meeting and they were submitted to you this morning. So those would be yet another round of changes that would be incorporated incorporated into what is now an omnibus amendment that the solicitor is preparing. Those items which are new relate to two issues. One is they relate to parking and the other is they relate to further design guidelines, so to speak, for mixed-use buildings and for commercial buildings. The parking recommendations, I I will say that we we did do a bit of research. You know, a lot of people came to our Planning Commission meeting and expressed concern about the number of spaces that developments were providing. So we embarked on a research on what exactly is known in the field about parking in areas like Narberth and what are what are some comparable municipalities doing. And the short of that was that evidence is showing that parking requirements in areas like Narberth for mixed-use buildings are highly overestimated by the planning and engineering community. And in recent years, they've been trending downward to the point now where the standard, for example, for residential development is about one unit, one parking space per unit. We in particular looked at Lower Marion's recently passed zoning code and while its base requirements are about two spots per residential unit in its town and village centers, they offer a lot of credits and the effective rate is one space per unit. Which both of those, the one space per unit is a little bit higher than what we've been approving in Narberth. So we looked at that and we considered, because there are a lot of factors, like the nature of the transit-oriented district, the nature of the transit service, that it would that it would not be unreasonable to increase the parking requirements slightly for residential development in Narberth. And the way we have recommended doing that is by keeping the base requirements the same, but by eliminating the credit we give to properties for on-street parking, for the on-street spaces next to their building. Reasoning that in a five A district, those spaces really should be counted for the general good, not for the good of a development. And to eliminate a credit we offer currently for one space per use because it is duplicative of exemptions that we offer. Several of the approvals we've given have allowed applicants to count newly created on-street spaces towards their requirements and we felt we should not permit that any further. Again, on-street spaces should be counted towards the public good and for development requirements. And then for the largest developments, to add a requirement for visitor parking, for larger developments, say one for every every 10 minutes. So those are are actually pretty marginal changes at the edges, but I think they they bring us a little bit closer to the standard we're seeing of one space per unit as opposed to about point eight or point nine spaces per unit, which we have been approving. So there's one other parking change we discussed. One of the topics residents have asked us to consider is whether our code unintentionally gives preference to residential development over office or professional space development. And there's a concern that some of our office space might be displaced for residential uses. And so we looked at that and and in our recommending that we provide, we currently provide a blanket parking exemption for non-residential uses for the first 2,500 square feet of non-residential use. We're recommending we split that in the two parts. 2,500 square feet of retail uses can be exempt and 2,500 square feet of office or professional uses can be exempt. Again, we we think this is a small change at the margins, but what we are interested in doing is trying to equalize a little bit better choice between residential and office space and not have the parking requirements be a determining factor. So those are the changes, the new changes we are recommending in regard to to parking. In terms of building design, you know, we've spent a lot of time and we've discussed with council the the issue of storefront widths and the scale of the width of buildings. We also reevaluated how the code treats the vertical dimensions of buildings, the different levels of building, like the bottom of a building, the windows, the signs, the roof line. And we did that by doing a study of all the storefronts in Haverford Avenue and sort of drawing them and measuring them and trying to understand how they were really composed. And we felt that, we feel that we would like to recommend a tightening up of of the facade requirements for mixed use and commercial buildings. Currently, we define a base band, a window band and a cornice band. We would like to further define a signage band, which would be above the windows of a shopfront and to define for mixed-use buildings an upper-story window band. And essentially what we would like to do is simply in our drawings that we have in the code and the text of the code, call those out as bands that have design requirements as well. The goal really is to articulate requirements that are general, but in keeping with what we see on the street now. And I think that in overall, our goal is to encourage people who are designing buildings to pay more attention to those features. I think that in practice, in a practical sense, what would happen is what happened with the review of 203 Haverford, where if you followed that month after month, the app came back and revised their facade designs to be more in keeping with the patterns that already exist in the borough by eliminating large, large, reducing the amount of space that was dedicated, that was designed with large plate glass windows and replacing those areas with smaller traditional windows. I think we learned from that experience and learned that we need to express a little more clearly what our what our interests are there. It just got to Plan and Commission whether we were inhibiting the freedom of design. And we felt that we, what we are proposing does not go any further than requirements that are in the code already for other parts of the building. We're not we're not recommending we introduce new new ideas into the regulation. It's sort of just covering more of the facade than we than we cover right now. And we think that the recommendations we're making are are pretty much along the lines of what has already happened in practice and the discussion of buildings that have been that have been reviewed. So those are the two new, two things that we are working to develop language for and would like to include in that that omnibus ordinance. I hope I've been succinct and clear, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Todd.
I I have one small question, just because I was, what is a punched, what do we mean by a punched window here? Because it's used twice in the memo.
And we will work with Mr. Walker to come up with with more appropriate language.
Okay, all right, good. I was making, I wanted to make sure we were just introduced a term in there. No worries, you're on it.
Bit of a sheet of a plate glass window. It's a
Okay.
That's a lot of shadow line.
Yeah.
Okay, so my, I just had a question, but that's fine. Sounds like you're already all over it. You know what, that you're going to work with John on that. So the only question that I really have left, and I'm going back to this, I'm going back to this facade restriction, but not not for the reason that you think. You know, I was when I was concerned about this reduction of the facade maximum from 130% of the average on the block down to 115. I was concerned for a couple of reasons.
Excuse me, just to be clear, we're talking about the three A, three B and three C.
Three A, three B, three C, yeah. And but we've already talked about this and I I was in the meeting where you talked about it again. I know you guys gave this like fulsome consideration and I I appreciate the reasoning and it's it's all good. My my concerns were twofold. I was a little afraid that we would wind up, that we hadn't sort of done an analysis to see if it was restricting things to the point where, say, we might wind up with a lot of increasing existing non-conformities, right? Because we have a lot of variability on our blocks. What if what if increasing, what if decreasing the decreasing the maximum facade size to 115 would 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 make like half the houses and, you know, in some in some areas of the borough be non-compliant under our code. I didn't want to see that and we didn't have an analysis of that. And my other concern was about multifamily and the effect on the possibility of multifamily developments that are permitted within those zones. So to that end, I went through all the raw data that we had from the county and I figured out that, in fact, the the effect on non-conformities is not not what I was afraid of. So that's a big relief. But in going through the data from the county, what I came to realize is that let's, let me backtrack. I'm going out of order. I I know that not everybody follows the zoning code with the intensity that I do. So let me just, you know, there there's this thing, there's table 14, right? Table 14 is in our appendix and it gives anybody who wants to do a development a data set of what the average facade is on each block in the borough, right? And for three A, three B, three C zones, that's where we have this average facade restriction for development. And block is defined in our code as sort of all the houses on one side of the street, on the street segment between intersections. So say the 100 block of Conway evens would be a block, odds would be another block. So we've known for a while now that the table 14 does not divide those facade averages by block. It averages all both sides of the street in together. We've known that was a problem. And and I know the Planning Commission is intending to fix that, but when I was looking really closely at the raw data, I discovered that there are more problems than that in table 14, significantly more problems. It appears is about there's about 1,008 records in there. There should be about 1,200 in those zones for single family, twin. Basically, the building types that are covered by this. So there's there's some streets and there's some data that's just not there at all. Even within the 1,008 records that are there, about almost 300, about 296 were missing facade data. So we just have a zero. Okay, so that's 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 the data is just missing. So you've got about 41% of the data that should be in that table isn't there. That alone would make me feel like we are better off for this interim period of time before the county is able to update table 14, pulling it out of the code, rather than leaving data that is that inaccurate in there for people to rely on, since we're going to be needing to insert a new table 14 in the future. Anyway, we're going to need to revisit that. I think we would be better off pulling that out at this time. Nothing in the code refers to table 14. And what we would do in the absence of having a table 14 would be that applicants would have to do to take their own measurements according to our code. And we could verify them until we have an accurate table 14. I hate to leave data in there that is that off-base that people can rely on because I mean, none of us have the time to go through it and see exactly what the implications of that are, but it 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 could be could be bad. I mean, it could be, could lead us to have to have to permit a project that we wouldn't want to permit possibly or wind up having to argue about it. So I was going to ask if we could have a discussion about just pulling table 14 out altogether until we can fix the data. There's also some questions about whether even the facades that are measured in there were measured according to the terms of the code. That is to say, including all the 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 sort of the frontage within six feet of the frontage line, you know, within six feet back and also sort of extending up to the maximum height of the building. It's not clear, when I'm looking at it, I I think that it may not have been measured strictly, the county's data may not have been measured strictly to the specifications in our code as well. So I think there's a lot of industry that it's not accurate and I'd rather pull table 14 and put in an accurate one at a future time. So.
Should I respond?
No, if you would, yeah, if you have any thoughts on that, I mean, I'd like to hear everybody's thoughts. I just think better safe than sorry.
Pause for the one flaw where there were a lot of data sets with zeros in them. I I don't think I was aware of that. So anyway, to answer your question, as a rule, as we discussed idea, some not in the way you've presented it, as a general rule, we would rather have the borough provide that data and not have to rely on calculations that might have to be checked. On the other hand, as an interim solution to avoid problems that might actually be bigger, as you are, you know, suggesting, inaccurate data might lead us to bigger problems. I think I think it's reasonable to propose that we leave the table out until such time that we can provide accurate data. I think I think we all know what our intent is here. And I almost feel it's at the point where, you know, it's it's almost like, it's the kind of thing where I would, it's a, it it might just be the borough solicitor's call, right? The borough solicitor would be able to assess what's the best way to do this if we don't feel we have accurate data. But I but I think what you're suggesting is is reasonable. If we don't have that and if we intend to replace the table when we can get the correct data, then in the meantime, what you're suggesting is a reasonable follow-up.
Okay, thanks, Todd. Yeah, maybe talk to John about that and see what he thinks. And if he has any questions about why, you know, I don't want to bore everyone, but I can show him sort of where there's all the zeros. He can sort of see like, oh, it's a lot, it's it was, once I really started looking at it, I I it was much different from what I was expecting. So thank you for taking that into consideration. I appreciate that. I I wondered if the, the one thing I didn't hear discussed when I, when I sat in on the Planning Commission meeting, I guess it was, gosh, it was February or March when you guys really talked about this in detail, was about the effect that this could have on the the possibility of of constructing a multifamily home in the three A, three B and three C zones where they are permitted. And I think that multifamily housing is something that we put in our code pursuant to the idea that it does meet some goals for affordable housing, for environmental reasons, for efficiency. I think that it's something, it's not a housing form we want to discourage. And there is already a fairly stringent site requirement for family, multifamily homes. You have to have at least 3,000 square feet per family. So per family unit for that building on your site. So that that means that multifamily homes can't be crammed onto tiny sites anyway, and there are already step backs and such forth. I'm I'm not sure that it, that it seems like very sound policy to restrict the facade of a multifamily home to just 115% of what, say, a detached, single-family home would be on most blocks in Narberth, if we are in fact serious about permitting that that housing type to be constructed.
So the question would be, are these roles appropriate to the multifamily?
Yeah, right. I know that's not something that you took up at Planning Commission. I'm sorry to spring it on you now. It was something I had mentioned in the meeting and then kind of forgotten. It kind of dropped, dropped through the cracks, but I mean, given, given, you know, 115% of the average facade is, it's going to, yeah, that imposes a good deal of uniformity, which is, you know, which is, which is fine. I think that meets our goals on the whole, but if we want to permit, if not encourage, maybe not encourage, but at least certainly give a fair playing field to multifamily form types. I'm I'm not sure that it's, that it, that it makes sense to include that building form in this restriction. Would it be possible? Is, I don't know if that's something that you had thought about. I didn't hear a discussion at Planning Commission, but.
No. At this point, and and I mean, we'd be happy to talk about it at a future meeting, but we won't be meeting until July. It's a reasonable question. All and all I can say is we'd be happy to take it up at a future meeting. In in regard to this amendment, I, you know, I I think that we were quite aware that our role is to advise council and, you know, council takes our advice into you know, council takes our advice into consideration and sometimes makes its own tweaks on things. And so if that were a tweak you wanted to suggest, you know, I think that would be the appropriate way to approach it right now.
Man, I wanted to know what anybody else on council sort of has had, what, what your thoughts are. Because I mean, think, if you think about trying to put a three or four, say, say a three-family, multifamily home and, and put it on a block where maybe you have a lot that's large enough, but you can't build it in any reasonable way, because between your, your rear setbacks and your height restriction, and then on top of it, you're, you're being required to stay within the form of other of existing detached family homes with the facade that, that, that's within a very narrow band of what the average is on that block. I mean, I think it could have the effect of making it really impossible to build multifamily homes in those, in those districts.
I tend to agree with you on that detail, Michelle, and, um, just for this evening, for the purposes of this agenda, we were kind of gonna just stick with the five A discussion, and then, um, of the discussion of these five A tweaks that, that Todd was presenting. So I'm wondering if.
Okay, well, one problem is that we're gonna have a, we're gonna be voted, I think we're gonna be looking to vote on an ordinance at the business meeting next month, right? Which would include, I think, would be the omnibus, obby, and omnibus zoning ordinance.
Introduce, and we're planning to introduce it in two weeks. So this would be, I mean, I wonder if you can just, we can look at that offline and then discuss the table in two weeks, and if.
Okay.
We want to write in that exclusion, I think, and the other council members agree, we could, we could do it then. For, you know, for multifamily. Um, Fred has a comment or question for Todd. Fred? You're muted, Fred.
I'll try to do that, okay. Um, just a quick question about actual buildings. So it seems like if we're eliminating the bonus for these on-street parking spaces, now they have, then maybe the developers aren't going to value them. Is there any concern that they might eliminate on-street parking spaces? I mean, do we, do they have a penalty for removing any on-street parking spaces? Because suddenly they're not gonna, they're not gonna have any value for the developers if we, you know, if we remove that bonus that they're getting.
Um, well, it's not really a bonus, it's just that, um, it's, it's a credit. You, you know, I, I think that, um, and I don't know if Eric is still on the, uh, call, or not Eric Johnson, but I think it's almost a separate issue. I, I don't think the borough, because the borough owns the right-of-way where the parking spaces are.
Eric's gone to bed, sorry.
I think the borough would have to agree to reduce, to eliminate uh, parking spaces, uh, on a street. I, I, I don't know that that's the developer's call. Usually what happens is they reconstruct that part of the street because it gets all torn up during the construction process, and they have to put it back the way it is. But we have two situations, uh, on Forest Avenue and on Essex Avenue where because the properties are being reconfigured, when the street is rebuilt, there will actually be new parking spaces on the street. The Rickland site is, you know, because of the way it works, people pull in and park across the curb, that'll go away, and so there will be new metered parking spaces on the street. And I, I think that those spaces come there because that's what the borough requests or requires when they rebuild the street. And I don't, I don't think the developer gets to decide that. But what they did do is they turned around and said, well, since we're adding those four spots, can we count them for our property? We didn't really have a way of, it was a, you know, that, that, there's not a rule that says to do things one way or the other there. So what we'd like to do is prevent that from occurring.
Yeah, I'm saying I'm, I'm not sure that was a coincidence that those parking spaces magically appeared when it seemed like they might get credit for them. So, you know, I'm okay with this rule, but I think we'd want to make it clear that, you know, we're, you know, we, we expect developers to retain the on-street parking that's already there. That's, uh, that's my point.
Okay. You certainly agree with that.
Or produce more in the, in the instance of the gas station rent, um, site as well at Forest and, and Havford. When it was a gas station. We, we, when the use was changed from gas station to gym, we, we picked up four parking spaces there, short-term parking spaces. I think Rod, we want to go to Rob.
Uh, Todd, I just wanted to ask about the, the parking, um, adjustments that you're, you're proposing. Um, do you have specific dimensions for these spaces, or is, is the size of a parking space standard in the code? Can you help me with that? Because I, I've been thinking, can we shrink some of the parking spaces? Do they need to be the same size that they are? Um, it's just been a question I, I've had.
Yeah. So the answer is first, part A, yes, there's a standard space, there's a standard, uh, dimension. Um, and it's actually, um, it's in the subdivision in land development ordinance, um, not necessarily in the zoning code. It's, it's tricky. They're in both places sometimes, and one of the things we're working on now is an updated subdivision in land development ordinance, which will sort out what belongs there and what belongs in the zoning code. Um, the question, what we ultimately approve usually is a nine-by-eighteen-foot spot, which is slightly smaller than the kind of suburban standard spot, which is usually ten by twenty. So we tend to slightly smaller spots. The, the problem we have is that actually cars are still getting bigger. Um, and it's, it's amazing, uh, and so it's hard to, it's hard to think about how spots could be smaller. But that is a conversation that we, we will have when we update the saldo. What's, what's, you know, is that standard here correct, or could it be changed?
Okay, thank you.
So I just want to say at this point that if, if council members have, say, alternative ideas to the, the, those that Todd has presented, um, when John Walco, um, finishes his current, the draft he's currently working on for this omnibus amendment, um, I think, I think you could come prepared with some markups to present as alternative, as alternatives, um, you know, and maybe, if it's okay with you, Todd, maybe anyone who has an idea like that could pick your brain and.
Of course, I'm always open to that. All of you know, I'll, I'll return your calls quickly as I can.
Bob.
And I think we're going to Michelle. Is that right?
I had, I had a hand raised.
Thank you.
Um, Todd, I actually have, um, a, a part of your letter highlighted because I was gonna reference it during my F and A uh, report, and I'm wondering if perhaps I can just read it for the good of the public and ask you to comment now. Bob, does that work for you?
Yeah, it's, I, that, I think, um, does anyone object? Just gonna do that out of order, so super.
Okay.
Share with us now while Todd's, like, while Todd's here to.
Why, why Todd's here, okay. Um, so, and I'll elaborate on F and.
Do you mind, Todd? Do you have time for a minute?
I'm, I'm here at your pleasure, Mr. German.
So wait, wait one moment here, Cindy. I just want to make sure, let's close out this topic first. Todd, if you could just stay here with us for a minute, and let's just, let's complete this, this agenda item, because I think that may just take us off in another direction, and we'll be ready to go off to our committee meeting reports. Um, is there more to say about the five A, specifically the, the parking and the, the design standards that Todd presented tonight? Okay, so then, thank you so much, Todd, for all that work that you've been doing and ongoing, and we'll see you, we'll see you next time. So Cindy, yeah, share, share those thoughts with us now, and then we'll do committee reports next.
Okay, um, so, so just as kind of a, a brief review and context, um, with COVID nineteen, F and A and the council was saying, how can we best support our businesses at this time? And we were thinking about where would we have sources of money, and then where, where would those funds go to best support economic development and the businesses? And conversations we had with both the, um, N B A, saying, you know, how could we support you? And businesses, um, with someone who actually does consulting with business improvement districts, all really led to support what Todd writes now in his report, um, with the N P C, which is a, a need to really, um, identify how we can recruit retail. And, and, and so we've, we've kind of like triangulated a need here, right? Like both the N B A, both an outside consultant and our Norbert Planning Commission said the same thing. And Todd, I'd like to maybe just read for the good of the public, um, a part of your paragraph and ask you to maybe give us a little light, and to say that both the N B A and Todd have been invited to, um, our June F and A meeting, so we could talk about this a little more, but why we have you. You say, "In regard to the general retail environment, N P C reiterates its recommendation that the borough retain a Main Street manager whose focus is on retail recruitment and retention. While Norbert residents enjoy the mix of business and scale of businesses that we have now, and this I think is the most important part, Todd, that you say so beautifully, we cannot simply will the retail district we want to existence or survival. And marketing and promotions are not enough in and of themselves." Um, thi- this to me really just kind of underscored our commitment of how we could strategically use business funds. I'm sorry, any additional funds that we have to support businesses to really reflect what we identified in our comprehensive plan, and so very clearly here in your Norbert Planning Commission report.
Support businesses to really reflect what we identified in our comprehensive plan, and so very clearly here in your Norbert Planning Commission report. For businesses to really.
I'm getting some really bizarre feedback, Bob. I don't know if you all can hear it.
I did hear it. I heard it. I'm looking for where it's coming from.
I think somebody else was speaking.
No, I, I was hearing me.
Holly is muted now. I think you were hearing it.
Holly Bonfarrow there for a moment.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, Todd, can you, can you speak to that?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, first of all, um, nobody on the Norbert Planning Commission is an expert in small businesses, retail, restaurants, so, um, um, there are others who know that, feel better than we. But what we, um, so we know what we don't know. And what we know is that the, what we do know is that the, the survival of a business district like Norbert's is really um, influenced a lot by macro conditions in the retail environment, um, that, um, that, um, we can't necessarily control. We also know that almost any successful environment you're in, whether it is a retail environment in Kenya, Prussia, uh, or a, you know, historic district, or a theme park, they're all very centrally managed, and they're managed to the point where there are, um, very conscious efforts to get, to find, to recruit, to incentivize, to obtain the kinds of businesses that you think you need to have the proper mix to create the place you want. Those kinds of mixes don't happen by accident. And so we feel that, the, the planning commission has discussed this many times, and we feel that the borough, based in our experience, has made great strides with the marketing and promotion of events. But what we've lacked is, is the ability to target the kinds of businesses that we think are anchors, and that we think we need, and to develop strategies for either cultivating them or retaining them. Um, and we, we know that if we wait for the broader market to try to supply those businesses to us, um, they won't, it won't. Um, and that there needs to be a conscious effort, and maybe some very out-of-the-box solutions to have them here. So that's, that's the thing there.
Thank you, and the Norbert Business Association very clearly said too, we know what we don't know, and, and what we don't know, and have the skill set for, is business recruitment and, and retention and grant writing. So what we'll do at F and A is really kind of triangulate and come together and think then, can F and A make a recommendation to have this conversation with our partners um, on, and how we speak to that comprehensive plan and support our businesses pre, and really critically now post-COVID? Thanks, Todd.
Much, Cindy. And, and Todd, thank you so much for, for, um, joining us within this impromptu opportunity, and, um, it's to do some off-roading here with Cindy. Um, that's, that was really well, well, a good use of time, I say.
Thank you for inviting me tonight.
Thank you.
I'm gonna sign off.
Good night, Todd. Um, so Carolyn Giordano was here from the Human Relations Commission, and she, um, needed to jump off the meeting, and we're fortunate that Holly Bonfarrow, who's also in the Human Relations Commission, has joined us now to present the work they've been doing this week around, um, in response to the murder of George, George Floyd. So Holly, are you able to unmute yourself there?
Yes, I can do that. How are you guys doing?
Hi, Holly, welcome.
Thanks, and my apologies, I'm pinch hitting for Carolyn Giordano, who was our other, um, commission member, who was on this call for the first two hours, and then had to be able to put her kids to bed. So she texted me, it's like, can you help on? And I said, sure. So we have a statement on behalf of the Human Relations Commission. If it's okay with you guys, I'll just read it. Bob, is that all right?
Please, that's, that's what this time is for.
All right, terrific. Thank you so much. The Norbert Human Relations Commission condemns all acts of racism and discrimination. We recognize that the events of recent weeks, including the murder of George Floyd, have intensified the pain and suffering that people of color have long endured. We join others around the world in searching for real and meaningful ways to confront racism, discrimination, injustice, and violence. Right now, the commission is here to support our immediate community. Our commission was created by the Norbert Borough Government in two thousand and seventeen as a mechanism to uphold and promote Norbert's commitment to anti-discrimination. The N H R C was established to receive and mediate complaints of discrimination in the areas of employment, housing and commercial property, public accommodations, and access to post-secondary educational institutions. We embrace that responsibility and have worked since our establishment to create policies and procedures to broadly address discrimination when it occurs in the borough. The N H R C plans to take the following steps in the weeks ahead. Step one, send the rules and regulations that will govern the adjudication of any complaints brought before the N H R C to Borough Council for approval. Pursuant to the ordinance passed in two thousand and seventeen, we will be seeking to adopt expanded procedures. Two, organize virtual community listening sessions. These listening sessions will provide an opportunity for people who live, work, and play in our community to have their experiences in Norbert heard, and to express to the N H R C steps they feel we and the borough government at large can take to address issues of discrimination and racism in our community. And finally, three, once the rules and regulations of the N H R C are approved, begin a public outreach campaign to raise awareness of the commission and our role. Norbert is one small community. The greatest resource and support we have is one another. And we urge all people who are part of the Norbert community to make their voices heard. We can learn from one another and grow as a community, but only when we are willing to truly listen. We must all work together to end discrimination, and we must hold space and listen to those of us who have experienced racism and injustice. We encourage everyone to come to a listening session or to reach out to the N H R C with your experiences and concerns. Together, we can change our community, and in so doing, help change the world. Yours in service, the Norbert Human Relations Commission, Andrew Charles, Chair, Rebecca Weisstar, myself, Holly Bonfarrow, Carolyn Giordano, PhD, and Mina Seif, PhD. That ends our statement. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Holly, and please extend our thanks to all of the members of the H R C for their time and their commitment to this, and, um, we, I'm, I'm certain that we're all kind of in a listening mode at this time, and, uh, look forward to doing that. And, and, and learning more from you, and, uh, learning about the rules and regulations that you'll be bringing to us later in the year.
As do we, and our commission will meet next Tuesday at five-thirty in the afternoon, and we'll be posting the Zoom information so that anyone who wants to come in during the public comment period at that time and speak to us may do so then.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you all. Good night.
Um, I see hands, so I'm gonna, why don't you stay on the call, Holly, if you're gonna, for a moment, please?
I can do that.
Okay, great. Um, I'm gonna go to Rob and then Cindy.
Uh, thank you, Holly, and, uh, I just wanted to invite you to collaborate with, uh, Public Health and Safety. So if there are any recommendations that you have coming from your commission as we look to be proactive, we would welcome any, any suggestions or recommendations in our committee to consider. So I, I just want to say that, thank you.
Well, thank you, and we will certainly pass any on. So far for the last period of months, our focus has really been on creating rules and regulations by which we could adjudicate a wide variety of complaints and an expanded notion, as was noted in the statement. But going forward, we really do feel like listening to people in the community and hearing what can we do above and beyond this mediation and adjudication. and hearing what can we do above and beyond this mediation and adjudication process is a very, very important piece. So we will absolutely reach out to Public Health and Safety, and thank you so much for that invitation.
Cindy.
It was a wave of, of thanks and appreciation.
Thank you.
And it's, I think, in particular, in the coming years, as we really reckon with these issues, it's so important for us to be hearing from the community through your, through your group, through your voices. I mean, I see you as representing the values of our community. And we will add those, braid those together with other voices that are similar and different. So here we are in the agenda now. We're at the committee reports. I wanted to just ask, do you guys want to take three minutes for a short break before we push through the remainder of this agenda or any, any thoughts? Just speak up if you want a two-minute break.
The two-minute stretch break would be great.
Anybody else? Okay, so you could also. Everyone back? Fred, are you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. I think.
Any back?
Not sure everybody's back.
Okay, let's see if. Mona, Michelle, Matt. I guess that's the hazard of taking a short break is that it ends up longer, a little longer.
I think four or five might have been a better, more realistic number. Two minutes is tight.
Let me get water and I'll be right back.
Someone ate an apple on a very large Zoom meeting that I had for work.
We're back. Okay, Fred, Michelle, we're back now. Okay, Fred, please, infrastructure report.
All right. So we began with a discussion of the PRP, which you've heard presented here. We discussed, so the bike lane planning, we're still continuing it, but we're waiting to hear from the planners that we identified, the Montgomery County and the Delaware Valley. And I think Sean has since spoken to some of those folks.
Yeah, I spoke to Montgomery County at length. I'm still waiting to hear back from DVRPC. The county would be able to assist the borough. It would have to be done under the umbrella of its existing planning services contract, either as something that they would do within that contract, setting aside work that they're currently involved in, or it would have to be an add-on, kind of à la carte addition to the program. The end product, though, would not be the engineered plan or drawing that we're looking for to be able to deliver to the public work staff to implement. I'm hopeful maybe DVRPC might be a partner who might be able to deliver this to the borough. I won't know until I have that conversation with them. I do know that in DVRPC's work program, they do have some money set aside for tactical urbanism. I didn't check to see how much it was, but I think we've targeted the right person at DVRPC to talk to. And we've been back and forth on emails a couple of times, and I want to have a phone conversation with her before I make a recommendation to the, to council and the committee as to what we should be doing next.
All right. So we're continuing to explore what the, what the cost might be of working with different groups here. We, let's see, we had a discussion of the parking study. So I asked Michelle to take the lead on looking at how Borough Council might go about implementing the recommendations on the parking study. So Michelle, do you wanna talk a little bit about your proposal now? Or do we wanna?
I thought you, I got the message that we weren't, you didn't, we didn't want to talk about it tonight.
Well, sorry.
Doesn't it that it was premature because there's some things that we need to sort of coordinate more with our administrative staff? Needs a little bit more input. That was, that was, that was what I thought I heard.
All right.
So I wasn't gonna talk about it because, because of that, I always thought, oh, put a, put a hold on it.
Okay. So we're discussing a task force idea for the, for the implementation of the parking study, but we're still waiting. I think there's still more information to be generated maybe before it's, it's ready to go to.
Yeah, I mean, briefly, we had a good discussion, but, and I think that I was very heartened to hear Matt, who's worked a ton on parking, say he thinks at this point, you know, we've got enough ducks in a row. We've got our, we've got our enforcement apparatus in place. We have, we have data and data collection capacities that, that would allow this to be a good time to move forward with implementing the parking study. The feedback I got post-meeting was that maybe the idea of the task force needs more, needs more one-on-one with Sean and with Matt before we bring it to full council. So I didn't want to raise that for discussion unless you feel strongly that we move forward, in which case we could talk about it. But given the hour and given that, I understand that maybe Sean in particular wants to have, have more input into that before we bring it up as a general and move forward with it, maybe we should table it. I mean, it's not like this is, we've got a lot on our plate. This is an urgent.
Council decision to be made at this moment, then I think that's.
We'll, we'll take this up again later on, but we just, we are considering implementation of it in committee, and we will continue to do so over the next few months. And so we've got an update from Matt about the LED light project.
Interject something here, Matt and Fred and Michelle. I just, what I'm seeing about this idea, and I really admire, is that you, I see your commitment not to have the council make decisions about implementation of parking that doesn't really include the voices of others within our community. So we don't make the same mistakes we've made in years past where, you know, we, the council implemented, meant it a change, say, in something about parking without really vetting it through members of our community, the people who live here first. And I, and I just want, I just, I'm admiring that that's really what you're up to, Michelle and Fred. And I, I think that's important to just, you know, underscore. So people who are listening get that that's what you mean when you say, you know, this next step with parking implementation. I'm just also aware that there's maybe kind of a box to connect in terms of the internal working with Matt and, Matt and, Matt and Sean.
Sean.
I think that's.
Yeah, well, well put.
The public input is a point, we're not on the point of making any changes right now. We're still talking process.
Right. You don't have, you don't have any questions for, you don't have questions for anybody yet. Yeah.
Michelle, did you want to jump back in there? No?
No, I think, I think, I think we'll table, I think we'll, we'll keep working on it in committee. We'll, we'll sort of circle back with, with Sean and Matt. And then I think maybe, maybe our next workshop meeting, we'll have something more ready, ready to talk about as a group.
And we continue to get.
Sean, does that sound like something you're comfortable with?
Yeah, just in the interest of time, why don't we move on? And if, and I see him nodding. You're still muted there, Matt, Sean.
Yeah, it's just gonna take a little bit more time for us, for me in particular, because of other things that I'm doing and other things staff is doing and the time I've had to look at what, what, you know, I've seen it for the first time just a few weeks ago. So yeah, some more time would be helpful.
That would be just in terms of like this chart, that would be kind of like the idea was, oh, this, I'm not being helpful here. Next meeting, but it's.
I think we're all clear on, I think we're gonna.
It just, it has to do with the movement, the flow through this chart to keep the project flowing in an unencumbered way. So everyone can be successful. Okay, go fair forward, Fred.
Okay. And then we also got updates on the longstanding Borough projects of the LED lights, which we're waiting on Public Utility Commission. I think they have to sign up on the purchase, but they're not meeting. So we have to wait for them to meet and give us ownership of the lights. And then we can get the new bulbs in. So it's taking longer than, than we'd hoped. And then the, you know, the bridge is still trucking along. There are no major decision points for council at the moment on the bridge.
Okay.
I think that's where we stand in infrastructure.
Finance and administration, Cindy.
Okay, thank you. I will be brief. Sean gave us an update on COVID-19, which we all heard at our full council meeting. He let us know that the office is running at full capacity, which we know as well. An update on the building access locks. We came in under budget, COVID-19 put kind of a halt into this process, and the office is revisiting the price and giving a demonstration. And that's that kind of key card access system to Borough owned properties. We shared the results of our open house and asked for continued communication via social media, that being Facebook and the flash newsletter. We asked that links to agenda and construction updates be put on Facebook, and that was really per feedback we received from that open house. Items we discussed were potentials of how the business privilege tax could be used to support businesses. And I'm not sure, given the time, that we want to discuss that right now, but I'll defer to Mona on that. You're muted. I'm sorry, say that one more time, Cindy. Oh, I'll defer to you. Would you like to update everyone on how we may use a business privilege tax to support businesses? I mean, I think it's, it's what you've already talked about, right? With potentially the idea of hiring someone to recruit and retain businesses. I think that's, that's one way. I mean, of course, there's other ways that we've always promoted community-wide event. But I think that's what we're looking at right now because it seems like we aren't going to be able to or, or reduce the business privilege tax without affecting our ability to collect it permanently. Okay, thank you. Oh, and I'm sorry. And I've been, I have been, I reached out to media to see what they're doing. I reached out to Westchester to see what they're doing. I reached out to Lower Merion Township. I reached out to Ambler. I have not yet heard back from all the people, but I haven't, I haven't heard any new ideas yet that we haven't already discussed. But I'm gonna keep reaching out to other municipalities to see what they're doing as well. So in kind of the grid you showed, Bob, and where we are and kind of the standard operating procedure is Erin kind of gave us the green light to explore this. We're discussing this in committee. Yep, that's the one. FNA will then decide who else from the community needs to be involved as we travel down. As I mentioned, where we had Todd, we've had independent discussions with the Norworth Business Association, now with the Planning Commission and an external just bid manager to have a consultation. And all of these folks will come together at a meeting as we travel down the process we agreed on. But we really are starting to see a pattern here. The NBA does 90% of what a bid coordinator or a Main Street manager would do. We've all kind of articulated gaps in both grants, acquisition, retail recruitment, and really the big future bridge mitigation. So we'll have a report for you next month for that. The office has communicated that they are interested in moving ahead with organizing permits and those user agreements for our fields. So regular users will be invited to our July meeting. That's the NAA, the Norworth Girls Basketball League, the Norworth Boys Basketball League. If the fields are open for organized sports, FNA has recommended that we ask for proof of insurance and indemnification of the borough. And that's all I have at this time, unless anyone from FNA wants to add anything. Mona, Fred, the office? Okay.
Thank you, Cindy. Rob and Greavy, Public Health and Safety.
Yeah, thank you, Bob. I just wanted to add, Cindy, before I give my report, just that I can help you with the retail recruiter idea because we did a lot of research on that a couple of years ago in economic development. So we had reached out to Manayunk and I have quite a few notes on that I can share.
Oh, my gosh. I didn't even think about that. I know that you did all that work, Rob. I'm sorry.
No, I mean, at the time, we decided not to move forward, but now it's COVID, you know, so we should definitely revisit.
Well, we were concerned about retail prior to COVID. Post-COVID, it's critical. So.
Right, right.
Yeah, I'm sorry that I didn't connect with you.
I just wanted to save you some work, that's all.
Well, I'm sorry. I didn't reach out to you. Thanks.
Okay, so in Public Health and Safety, we discussed the yellow phase transition beginning Friday with the mayor. And Andrea walked us through the precautions that we'll have in place, and those will be made available on the website. Part of that discussion is a decision about how to support the businesses along Hanford Avenue so that they can have outdoor dining and also allow for pedestrians to cross at a safe distance on the sidewalk. So, you know, we, we were discussing the possibility of blocking off some of the parking spaces. And that's just something that we discussed. We didn't come to a decision. But I believe, Andrea, we left it so that you as mayor would coordinate with Ed Ridgway and, and with the staff, and we would come to some proposal that we could.
Right. We, we've discussed a number of options. And frankly, there is no perfect solution. There are, there are issues with every, which way we have come up with. One of the discussion, one of the, the issues is when we, when they open with outside dining, with tables against their facility and maybe even against other facilities of, of, of properties where the owner lets them do that, does that force the pedestrians into the street? And should we be putting up, you know, a barrier in, in the parking lane where it would be safe for pedestrians to walk? You know, where there are issues with temporary barriers, there's issues with permanent barriers. What we're gonna do is, is hold off this weekend, watch and see how it goes. We're gonna have to make adjustments as we, as we go along and, and see what works and what's not working. And we'll have to be flexible to try and help. As I said before, we've come up with the, the possibility of closing off certain areas. We, that's come up, and it just is not very practical for a lot of the restaurants in there. So, yeah, we'll see where it goes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Andrea. So the second item would be the emergency management coordinator. We tabled that for July. Management Coordinator. We tabled that for July because the chief could not be with us, um, tonight, and obviously we want him involved in that conversation. Uh, the third item was the E A C update, and so Jesse Lidle and his team, uh, was here with us tonight to share, um, more on the carbon inventory and transitioning to the Climate Action Plan. And we got to see tonight some of how of the software, um, that's been made available to us through the D E P. It's called Clear Path through ICLI, um, can really, uh, support decision-making, um, so that we can achieve our carbon goals, um, over the next 10, 20 years. So they're forecasting tools. It's a really very powerful software that, uh, the E A C will be using this month, um, with the support of ICLI to put together a climate action plan. We would like to hold a public forum in the fourth week of June, and so we're going to propose a date, um, in the next week or so. That would be open to the public, and this would be a meeting when the E A C could share more of their work and invite public comment, and, uh, that would be built in to the climate action plan that they're drafting, and then they'll put a plan before us to consider, um, in, in the fall.
Okay. More for Public Health and Safety, Rob?
I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Um, it's time for public comment. I don't know that there's anyone here. I see one phone number here, and I'm not sure.
Fred has a question.
Sorry, I had a question for Rob.
Fred, thank you, Rob.
Um, should we really be setting up public meetings for the end of June? I mean, if we're in yellow.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I meant Zoom. It would be Zoom.
Zoom meeting? Okay, great.
Yeah.
Good clarification. Um, is there anyone from the public who would like to make a comment? I only see, I see the Civic Association number. I see a phone number here, 215-284-8553. Is that staff? I'm not sure who that is. Anyone know? Um, unmute yourself if you'd like three minutes to make a comment. Not hearing any comments from the public. So let's go to our action items. Um, Rec Board appointments. Um, Cindy, do you have, um, do you have, do you, do you know the names of the candidates and would you like to make a motion?
Um, oh, Fred?
Or, excuse me, Fred Scott.
Let's see your hand up.
I, I was, I was going to propose that since we're considering, we may be considering changes to the, um, Rec Board ordinance at the next meeting, that we could do the appointment then. I mean, I, I don't know. If everyone's ready, we can do it now, but.
Let's, it's on the agenda for now. I think, let's just, let's do it now.
It's been so long. So the three names that I have, um, and Sean, you'll correct me if, if I'm missing anything in the, in the temp folder, those that I reviewed are Jonathan Peterson, Carol Marie Scanlon, um, and Mary K. Hamburger. Those are the, the three I see. Fred, you're shaking your head now.
Mary K. is already on the.
Yeah, I saw her application in the temp folder, but it.
Isn't Brendan Gallagher?
Gallagher, yeah.
He withdrew, he withdrew his application.
Okay, so it's Jonathan and Carol Marie.
Jonathan, um, wait, okay. Um, I, I personally would, would like to speak on behalf of Jonathan Peterson, J. P. Peterson. I actually did this at our last meeting and we decided, um, not to make the motion, so I won't reiterate it and say anything other than he's been an advocate for securing open and recreational space, um, within our borough. He has been active, um, in both coaching athletics, but in the larger community, and I really think this would be an opportunity to have his kind of steady guidance and commitment to open space and diverse recreation in our community, and I, I really support, uh, and would like, would like to make a motion unless you'd like to have a discussion, um, with both candidates, Bob.
Is there, is there any other speaking about candidates?
I, I would like to say that I think, uh, just, you know, all of us talk about equity and racial equity. I, I don't, I, I'm new to council. I don't know how this process usually happens. I know we're very busy, but I also feel like that equity has to carry over to everything that we do, and if we want to think about bringing new people into our boards and commissions and new community members to participate, I think that our process should involve giving people the opportunity to come and meet council in person and answer questions, because I, all I saw were a couple cover letters, very brief. I didn't see resumes unless I was able, unless I was, um, blocked from seeing them because my Adobe wasn't working right. So to me, that's not enough to measure the quality of a candidate, and I, I just feel like it could slip too easily into, let's pick the people that we know and we have personal connections with, and as we know, those networks often discount equity. So to me, I just think we, we need to rethink that process.
I will say, this has been open for six months.
Yeah, and I, I would just want to say, for the moment, this is on the agenda now. We, we punted it at an earlier meeting. We did punt it to this meeting. It's on the agenda to make an appointment. I, at this point, I, I truly respect what you're saying, Mona, and I think we should certainly make effort in, as we go forward to do more outreach. And in the past, we've often provided opportunities for the candidates, for different boards and commissions to come in and be interviewed by council, and, and that can certainly be done. It's not a requirement that we do it that way. Um, it's not even a requirement that I think that we advertise. The council can, can appoint whoever they want to boards and commissions, but I, I think all of us hear you and, and think that going forward, that makes sense to make that kind of effort. But we had, we do have several candidates that have been waiting, that have been interested in the position. The board needs members, and, um, we, we have this on our agenda to vote this evening. So do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jonathan Peterson to the, uh, Recreation Board.
Is there a second? I see Rob's hand. Maybe you have to unmute and say it.
Second.
Is there any conversation to have?
I, I personally, I, I like him a lot. I'm going to vote no, only because I, I disagree with the process, and I think that for me, just seeing three, I, I think the advertising process was open for a long time, and that's good, and I think a lot of people had the chance to apply, but if I only know one of the candidates, right, and I don't know the others, then my own personal bias could, so that's my opinion. Uh, that's why I'd like a chance to meet candidates in person and be able to ask them questions. I think it gives you a little bit more to go on rather than just, I know this person and I like them.
Maybe you could, I mean, instead of voting no, I think, I don't want to be like procedurally, but I think you could amend, I don't know what the process is, I think you could bring a friendly amendment to table it and see if there's consensus to do that. If you would rather do that than, than just voting no on somebody, I think that's another way to.
Okay.
Make your concern real.
We have a motion.
Oh, thank you.
We have a second. You'd have to, each of those people would have to be willing to back out, you know, back their motion out. Do you want to ask, do you want to ask for that, or do you?
Can I, is now the right time to make the motion?
No, you would make a friendly, you would ask, you'd ask, you'd ask, Rob seconded the motion if he's willing to entertain your friendly amendment. You'd ask Cindy if she's will, agrees with it as well.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Rob, would you be willing to entertain my friendly amendment to, um, invite these people to come answer a couple of questions at a council meeting before we appoint?
Um, I want to be friendly, Mona, I don't know, but, but I, I would rather just vote on it. I mean, it's in our process, um, but, and, and then change the process going forward. So my preference would be to just vote on, on this up and, up or down.
Okay, so, so we have, we have a, we have a motion on, on the table and a second. We have conversation, discussion, any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll have, we'll vote. All in favor of appointing J. P. Peterson to the Narberth Recreation Board, say aye.
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 And it looks like the ayes have it. Are the, the nays, how many do we have?
Nay.
Yeah, we, we have a nay. So it's, so we have a vote of five to one.
Okay.
Six to one, one? I didn't see.
Five.
Off to one. Thank you. Very good. Action item B, downtown land development consultant proposal, Mr. Metric.
This is a proposal that was, uh, forward to, to council at our last meeting. We had to make a kind of last minute adjustment to, nothing really material to the pro, proposal, just the way it was, uh, just, just some of the labels we used and some of the, um, terms and conditions of the proposal. So we did not, uh, vote on it at our last meeting. So we're now doing the unorthodox thing, which is to take an action item and put it in our workshop, but this proposal has been written to assist the borough with evaluating land development proposals, uh, in its downtown commercial district, and it's an open-ended proposal that's, would be done at a, um, proposed hourly rate, uh, that you all have seen, and, um, the, uh, is from a, a consult incorporated.
Do you want to have, can I get a motion?
Um, I.
Hire E. S. I. E. Consult Solutions, Inc., enter into a contract.
Bob, I'll make the motion to, uh, enter into a contract with, uh, for downtown land development consultant part of the proposal given to us last week.
Right here, second.
Second.
I have to speak up, not sure.
Oh, second, Rob.
Rob, Rob McGreevy. Is there any discussion? I can't see all of you, so I'm, there we go. Now I can see all of you. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, we can vote. All in favor, the motion, the aye.
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 All opposed. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Thank you. We now are ready for announcements. Does anyone have any announcements?
Um, Bob, I have, I have one community announcement and then one personal statement if we have time. Um, community announcement is this Friday. We have our Narberth Business Association's first Friday and, um, our dog pageant at 6:00 P. M. So folks, um, can up until midnight send pictures of their dog.
How does that work?
Um, Narberth online, uh, you can submit. There are posters all over Facebook and Instagram with details of categories. You can send in up until, I guess you have less than two hours to make the deadline, um, and then you can log on via Facebook Live, um, on Friday at 6:00 P. M. Uh, on a more serious note, I would like to just, uh, ta, take a minute with your permission to just read a statement, a personal statement, um, after the events of last week. If that's okay?
Yes.
Uh, and I so appreciate the H R C's, uh, statement as well. "There is an indisputable, deep-rooted history of marginalization and pain in the African-American community, and George Floyd is a familiar example of a symptom to a much larger problem. Many have made statements and reaffirmed their personal commitment or organization's commitment to anti-racism. I'm less interested in more statements and personally wish to explore how we can be both active allies and address the systemic faults in our American policing system. I clearly see the first step in this journey, as reminding our Federal Order of Police of Robert Peel's important statement, 'The policeman, the police are the public and the public are the police.' Citizen oversight and active participation in the practice and theory of policing is critical. We are held hostage by collective bargaining and defense of some police who should not be granted the discretion to enforce our laws. Narberth is poised to be progressive leaders, just as we were in the Plastics ordinance, and demand public participation in our policing system. I am deeply thankful for the leadership of Chief Gallagher. He brings an integrity and professionalism to our force. The individual officers work daily as stakeholders in our community. I look forward to partnering with our police to break the ancillary culture of our national police system and help to co-create a system where policing is no longer merely law enforcement, but also explicitly a system of public health and safety for all. I believe Narberth has the police officers, chief, and elected officials to hear this call and take action now. I'm thankful for Commissioner Gale's statements, where he defined Black Lives Matters groups as domestic terrorists and explained that screams racism's not only to expose bigotry and justice, but to justify the lawless destruction of our cities and communities, because he made the covert overt, and now citizens have an undeniable clarity as to his character, moral compass, and can vote accordingly. His statement serves as a strong example as to why local elections matter. Imagine if every protester now attended their local public meetings and demanded plat, police reform and abolishment of systems which perpetuate violence and hatred." Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Mona, announcement?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I read this statement earlier in Public Health and Safety, but I think it's important to reread it in council. Um, so give a, a statement on everything that's been going on in our nation. Um, "My heart is in pain for George Floyd's family and for all people of color who are grieving and who have to live in fear of what might happen to their own family members. The murder of George Floyd by a Minneapolis police officer who knelt on his neck while other officers stood by and did nothing must be answered for. Police brutality is a symptom of the white supremacy that has plagued our nation since its founding, and we all must work to end that violence. I do want to start in terms of our borough by saying that I'm so grateful to have police officers Belfi, Dutton, Lynn, McCabe, and Vernaccio serving our borough. These officers work with professionalism, courtesy, and concern for the safety of all. I have confidence in Mayor Deutsch, Council President Mudrick, Police Chief Gallagher, Fire Chief Dixon, and Borough Manager Metric to lead our community through such difficult times. And I also think it's very important to say that I have the utmost respect for police officers who serve and protect, because they choose every day to serve in a profession where they put themselves at risk to keep each other safe, to keep, I'm sorry, to keep others safe. On a daily basis, they answer calls where they see the worst in human nature and yet must respond with respect for the dignity of the people involved. They have to be on guard at all times while de-escalating dangerous situations." I need to put my reading glasses on. Sorry, I don't want to misquote myself. "And these are true talents requiring highly skilled professionals, and our police officers need our support. But police officers are human beings, and none of us are immune to the systemic racism that we were raised in. Prejudice exists in every community. I often say that Narberth is my dream town because I always wanted to live in a front porch community where neighbors look out for each other, and I do feel so blessed to live here, but I've also been shocked by what I've heard from some Narberth residents. One who complained of the unwashed non-residents using our parks, one who complained about adults with disabilities working in our town, and another who said we need to kick out the immigrants. My husband has heard neighbors say derogatory things about Jews, and my neighbor asked if he was asked if he came to this country illegally simply because of his accent and the color of his skin." So if we are being honest with ourselves, we've all heard family members, friends, or neighbors say prejudiced things. We, as Americans, inherited a system that is full of institutional racism, and we can't afford to ignore it any longer. It's tearing our communities apart. Our economy was built in part on slavery and the exploitation of immigrant workers, and we clearly see the resulting economic injustices today during this crisis. Our educational system was built on segregation, and today, too many schools lack diversity and funding for even the most basic student needs. Our system of government was built while disenfranchising people of color, and even today, some government officials are trying to strip thousands of eligible voters of their right to vote by using illegal voter purges. Our criminal justice system has systemic racism in all areas from stopping and frisking to arrests, to trials, jury verdicts, and sentencing. You only need to look at government. You only need to look at government data to see how convictions and sentencing for the same crime differ dramatically based on the race of the alleged alleged criminal and victim. Mass incarceration disproportionately robs black people of their liberty. The U S makes up roughly five percent of the world population, but we lock up close to twenty-five percent of the world's prisoners. We imprison more of our own citizens than China and Russia do. People of color have endured for five hundred and twenty-eight years since Europeans immigrated to the Americas and began brutalizing people of color, all the while justifying white violence by calling other human beings violent savages. We've made progress, but the tragic repetition of that same pattern of violence this month was a breaking point. A prophetic visionary once said, "We've come too far to turn back now. Our nation has much to account for, and we must start right here in Narberth. Together as a community, we can reject discrimination and end the cycle of violence. We can bring love into politics in a fierce and unapologetic way. We can follow the teachings of Dr. Martin Luther King, Jr., who taught us that hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. We can come across color lines and party lines to work together to end systemic racism in our own community and protect the safety of our citizens, our visitors, and our police officers. As a member of Borough Council, I'm committed to ensuring that Narberth works toward best practices in anti racism, de-escalation, and professional training for our officers in order to safeguard our residents and visitors. We must research all tools available to us to pushing for anti racism training for all borough staff, elected officials, and Narberth Fire Department volunteers because this is about dialogue and transformation. It's about recognizing each other's common humanity. I'm truly honored to serve with our current team of elected officials, staff, and volunteers who I trust and respect and who work with integrity to better our community. We have a real opportunity with this team to make Narberth a model of best practices in policing, public service, and equity. But government officials and staff cannot do this alone. Narberth residents are an integral part of this effort. We all are affected by the bias that we were raised in, so we all have a responsibility. Call out prejudice when you see it in your own circles. Go outside of your comfort zone and listen to people you don't normally speak with. Learn from other people's perspectives. Reach out to people of color and ask them how you can support them in this time. Reach out to our police officers and thank them for their service. Be kind to each other. These are painful times, and we are all suffering, but these are the ways we will begin to heal our wounds together. And maybe if we can all learn from each other and move forward in this community, perhaps we can forge a path for other communities to begin healing as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mona. Other announcements? I think this is a good stopping place. Thank you all so much for your time. We send our love and prayers, blessings to the Mudrick family, to Aaron. I certainly miss his leadership. Look forward to being with him again on June seventeenth for our business meeting. Can I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
A second?
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Bob, standing in so well.
Thank you. Good night, all.